... board meeting, if there are things consolidated into one meeting, we did not have more exceptions this week. So with that, would you please silence or shut off your cell phones? And please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, Mr. Bailey is caught up in some road construction between here and Bend. He will be here shortly. He checked in earlier, probably you too. So, good morning, Mark. And so with that, going into additions, we have a special session minutes for August 9th, special transportation bylaws, landfill request for quotes, network order number two. Welcome, Mr. Bailey.
Good morning.
That was pretty.
Good morning.
You made it awful, Paul. If the chairman didn't get the meeting going right on time, you'd probably made it.
I knew I shouldn't have warned you.
Yeah. And one other thing on additions, I would like to have a discussion on the fairground grandstands today.
Okay.
Possible decision on some assistance there. Deletions, we're going to table official, official force road for more information forward. And with that, Melanie, did I miss any?
That's my knowledge.
Commissioner, any additions or deletions? All right, with that, we will open public comment. Public comment at this time. No public comment. We'll move right in. Mr. Hock, let's start with you. Get you in and out of here. First thing is the purchase chip rock for action, possible action decision. And welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Lake County has the opportunity right now with Mike River being in place, making a lot of material here to get better price on some grains, chip rock. We'd like to up to, it'll be just shy of forty-two hundred tons, but not to a C-72,000. Take advantage of these lower prices, lower prices, better prices because of the volume after making, they were there to make for our C-72,000. This will help us out with how to supply chip rock.
Seems like the reasonable thing to do.
Yeah, as we're able to act with their setup, there's always true enough to be quite a cost savings, so this is a very good thing.
Yeah. And Mr. Bailey, I know it's review this.
Yes, I agree.
There we go.
Yes, reviewing follows under one of our contract board review rules, number 12, and complies with that, so we can go forward with it.
I was, I had, I think it listed on the item summary report specifically rule number 12, section B and subsection two for quality as well. They're going to make it for us at the spec that we want. See to our needs.
Perfect. So I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the three H chip rock with ODOT spec and quarter ten chip rock with Lakeview spec as presented.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the purchase of up to seventy-two thousand dollars, forty-two hundred tons under rule twelve, subsection B, number two. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Kevin, you have landfill, I have next, landfill request for quotes.
So, in transitioning from contractor operating to self-operating landfill, we wanted to look at the potential expenses versus what we think our own will be of contracting out the transfer of solid waste from Christmas Valley and from Paisley to Lakeview on the regular schedule. So we asked the three vendors, collection services in the county to provide us some quotes on two different options. One, first option being a cost of transfer from those two sites to Thomas Creek Road landfill that includes their cost of containers. And option number two was just the cost of transfer if we purchased the containers. So I'm going to read down through these three. The three vendors were Lakeview Sanitation, Gary McLees and Sons Incorporated, and Lake County Disposal, which represented Mitch Brown, who's wearing in this, A. D. Brown. So the best price for option, well, best price for option number one and number two, but we'd like to entertain working with option number two where we purchased the containers. I think that eliminates some future concern that the vendors had when I sat down with them about maintenance of those containers. We're going to have back those two sites to utilize all available space so that we don't have constant argument about who intended what. Also, in five to six years of the cost of this, we will have those containers paid for because they will last way longer than that, so.
Well, and considering we entered in this, it's a five-year with potential renewal, but if we decide to step out, we have the containers for our own operations in the future.
And then if we decide to move forward with the truck we already have, that's correct.
Yeah.
So I think it's, I think option number two best suits our current and future needs. So just to read down through, the apparent low quote is Lakeview Sanitation, forty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars. The next closest was Lake County Disposal, was fifty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars. And Gary McLees and Sons was ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to do those transfer work. So the apparent low quote is Lakeview Sanitation. We'd like to move forward with that.
And just for discussion before a motion or anything is that within forty-one, one eighty-four, which is the apparent low quote, there's also language that, that goes, I guess, both ways if there's extra lows have to be made or if it's less than the total number.
Correct.
That number could vary just a small amount on the, that was still in this year.
Yeah, so in discussing all the available options with contractors ahead of time, what ifs, so to speak, we needed additional service, those quotes are there as well. And from Lakeview Sanitation was the least expensive on that. If we needed an additional service of two containers being swapped out, six hundred forty-eight dollars at Christmas Valley or two hundred eighty-eight at Paisley, we don't foresee that being a problem. It seems to be fairly scheduled at once a week service for Christmas Valley and, and once every other week at Paisley with these fifty-yard containers. But in the event that anything happens, we wanted to have that availability to, we need a little bit more service, so.
Well, what I like about it, Kevin, is we've done it ahead of time, so we're not scrambling.
Yeah, it's on.
We need to negotiate something, we've done it ahead of time, it's in the contract, we're good to go, so.
So this quote also has language in it that describes five years in addition to three potential extensions upon both parties' renewal, similar to what the landfill contract was.
And so I believe the question for legal counsel is basically would become a contract when we reviewed that, or?
No, I haven't seen the contract. This is just.
This is a, and I'm going to.
Then you'll pull together a contract, though.
Yeah, yeah, because I need to work with our legal counsel because we want to try to address future concerns for fuel escalation.
Yep.
A lot of these quotes were based on a per mile charge, and so in that, we need to have, not only for our own protection of the expense, but for the contractors as well, some sort of fuel escalation, reasonable.
Well, we discussed that a few weeks ago. I don't know what the right amount's going to be, but we'll work through that. But we, we can anticipate prices are either going to go up and not likely to go down.
The fuel, the fuel escalation that I'm personally involved with all the time is when we do asphalt contracts like this and we do them out over a longer period of time where contractors might not give us as good a price unless there is fuel escalation in there, so we, we will entertain that in the, in the actual agreement.
Okay, so what we can act on today is the low quote and then a contract to come back before it's to, to return. Perfect.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the quotes that we receive and the low quote being Lakeview Sanitation and using option two of the quotes that we received, the forty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars.
Our second motion, motion's been made and seconded to accept the low quote, option two, Lakeview Sanitation for forty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars, including the additional service products on there also. Any further discussion?
I'll just note for the board that you're not required to take the low quote. It's an evaluation of all the quotes and the information Kevin brought forward allows you to make that decision, so the fact that it coincides with the low quote is just often good.
And Kevin, during discussion, this would take effect probably October 1st, is that the date?
Yes.
Or you'll get the contract or anything before then?
We'll do that.
Any further discussion?
For the way.
Any further discussion? Well, the time's flying, you know, it's just flying. Further discussion?
None of this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I want to catch, you know, my, Mr. Chair, Kevin, before he leaves, we did delete the official Creek Road project and, you know, it's, it's a call that the agency made and I don't want to belabor it, but I think that in this day and age, and we'll do all of it. I know Shay, engineer for the Fremont, why Nina was disappointed not being able to pursue that, that things came up internally. We have all sorts of, and I won't say we, the federal government has all sorts of cooperative agreements that lie inside of Lake County on the Fremont and outside. And it's a little bit frustrating only because it's a service, what we, what we were agreeing to do under this master agreement in this particular project is a service to our citizenry. And our citizenry are both in Lake County and Climate County and those who have entities within Lake County that would definitely benefit by approved road. The road work someday will get done, but I'm a little bit frustrated. I talked to Kevin about this last night, he told me I wanted to chat about it a little bit in our open meeting today, so, I want it on the record at least.
Yeah, well, I, I think we just tabled it. I think it will come back and everything will work out. As far as I'm concerned, it's one forest, it's the Fremont, why Nina, so it's one one forest. So the only difference is there's a county line and I think it can work out.
Well, we've already done partnership work with them to help them fix the slide on Dog Lake and repaint that. I, I had hoped that we could enter into this to keep the arrangement progressing. I think that that partnership is good for all, every party, including and mostly including the public, so.
Well, the agencies have a track record, it's not in, in the engineering, but they have a track record, and that's what's frustrating to me, having been involved in various stages of that, of these cooperative arrangements within agencies and we're an agency, we're a governmental agency. And as you said, Commissioner, yes, hopefully we'll get that opened out.
Okay, Kevin, you have anything else?
Just wanted to take a few moments here and brief, brief you guys on yesterday's, I was asked to, through Oasis, five of county managers or county road superintendents or whatever terminology we need to utilize, to sit in on a steering committee of sorts to work on standardizing and work on more clear guidelines for setting, adjusting, studying speed limits and keeping that consistent across at least our state. There's a, a current guideline that uses what they call the eighty-fifth percentile, meaning you study a road over a course of time and you look at certain traffic and how fast they go and in that eighty-fifth percent is how that gets set. But there are a lot of other criteria that need to be utilized. And when we have rural areas that start to develop and aside from the basic rule, which is fifty-five when it's not posted, road superintendents such as Lake County Road Superintendent need to have a more specific set of guidelines to ensure safe travel through those speed limits so that we are not all doing different things or using personal opinions for speed so that it's consistent across the state. So we went and sat down with ODOT and the legal oriented cities in a first of probably what will be a lot of meetings to look at the policies that are in place, the statutes that are in place, and the administrative rules that are in place that probably could just have some clarification so that we're all working under the same set of guidelines.
Thank you. I'm glad you're sitting on that because of, as far as the county roads, we follow the state guidelines and all that as far as for speed and such, so it'll be good that you're sitting there, boys.
Well, Commissioner Kevin, you can correct me if I'm misspeaking, but I think this committee's looking at possibly getting the authority for, and that's where I think you're talking about, in the form of across the state, the counties might get the opportunity to set the speed zone where that's possibly. And it's been a known condition, not multiple times, it's been a few times, and quite frankly, I think from my point of view, they need to throw the study, the eighty-five percentile study out the window because if you don't stop somebody that's speeding and you say everybody's going seventy miles an hour, we got to set it at that, you know, that's not good criteria. So that's what we're looking at.
And your one is, for the next one, I'm sure, we have AMs up next, resolution two thousand eighteen zero five. And thank you.
So this is in the matter of the loan that we've been talking about through budget process and then the landfill operations and the county taking that over. So through the budget, we approved a road reserve loan to the landfill for equipment purchase. Because of the nature of the capital equipment purchase, the state requires that loan to be paid back in ten years. And then also for the governing board to set the interest rate. It can be tied to the local government investment pool, but it doesn't have to be. So the documentation in front of you does an amortization schedule of up to six hundred thousand for equipment purchases. However, I wonder if we need to kind of keep that open until we are all set then with equipment purchases. So I almost think at this point in time, we need to have just an approval of a loan from Road Reserve to the landfill for equipment purchase, and then I can come back with the true amortization schedule when we know what that final amount is. I kind of think that containers and different things are going to change what we discussed earlier.
I think you're right.
So.
I'm counting on Kevin. Reality is, yes, we need to keep that open.
So does the resolution need to be changed to follow what you're saying there, Ann?
So I, I almost feel like, just knowing how things are changing with this, today just approve a loan and in a meeting in the future, I'll come back with the true amortization schedule of the resolution. So on the record, we would just approve up to, well, see, I don't even know that we can say up to six hundred thousand, I can let my go over.
Well, the original, I mean, the original budgeted number on the estimates that we took in planning for this was six hundred thousand dollars. And we'll do every effort to stay within that, but.
Okay. I think to keep this, sorry, Commissioner, to keep the books tidy, I, my first instinct is to approve it for the six hundred thousand and have a general statement in there that once true costs are known, we can add an additional resolution to do so.
That's acceptable.
I don't mind, yeah. Yeah.
That, that's a lot better than just approving, although.
Yeah, well, and with these two, you know, I don't want to refer to it as an open check, but because they're very, very conservative, I think for the record, we need to. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
I agree.
Well, that, honestly, truthfully, that number can be adjusted down too. I mean, I have, I have laid out what things that we still need yet and are still working on, looking at scales and getting quotes and things like that. So those specific numbers are, have to be dialed in until we actually know what those costs are and maybe a less.
Well, and I think that'll be one of the, following our philosophy of conservatives budgeting relative to our expense and.
Well, I approve, not to belabor it, though, we're not taking over operations till October, so there is other things that comes far as making the payment back and everything, the revenue may be a little bit less than the first projected amount. That's where you never took over July 1st, unless I'm not.
In the first year, that, that would make that was.
It will happen to in the next budget.
Okay.
And so if, if the revenues are not there to support it, general fund is still in the business of supporting the landfills, so we'll balance that budget next year with that payment in place.
Okay.
Depending on, again, the values of the loan that this time, so.
Knowing that I will be here, just curious, is there any, and I'm not truly being facetious, will there be any penalty for early payoff of the loan?
No. No.
Are you going to make a big contribution and move this stuff out? Is that where you're going with that?
Yeah. Oblations to the landfill are always wrong.
It sounds like we got that on record almost.
I'll just stop.
You've got to be careful what you say, Smith. So I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number two thousand eighteen dash zero five in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars. It's a loan from the Road Reserve to the landfill for equipment purchases to be paid back over ten years at a two and a half, or two and a quarter percent interest rate.
Our second motion, motion's been made and seconded to accept resolution number two thousand eighteen dash zero five. Further discussion? This is just, we have already made the decision in the past to budget this amount. This is to make sure that we follow all the guidelines as far as auditing the whole versus resolution, that this is in compliance with that, correct? Further discussion?
Yeah, just once again for the record, we will revisit this, Ann and Kevin and the board will revisit this on the cost of, now completely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Dave Vermon, Tom, Lori.
Which one?
Well, I would think it'd be the solar airport lease.
Sure. I'm going to, yeah, we'll let.
So what we have is a draft, come on up, everybody. We have a draft lease agreement that was put together, been beat up and reviewed last meeting. The commissioners, I brought a few things forward, they've been redlined through Lori and others, and so today is just sort of go over those and get, we're closer to have the absolute contract put together. Is that what you see, Lori, Dave, Tom, I'm sorry.
Peter Brown.
Yes.
Peter Brown is Vice President of Obsidian.
Thanks, I knew that and I couldn't remember the name, my fault.
Close to that, relative to David Brown.
Yeah. Extremely close.
Extremely close. Irish friends, right?
That's right.
So Lori, you sent us back answers to redlined our questions, so I think, Commissioner, you want to just go over those one at a time?
Sure.
Is there any other preview needs to be done, Dave, Tom, and Lori, before we get right into that?
The only preview is, we're very grateful for this opportunity and I told Dave this morning, we just passed a pretty major milestone in making airport solar a little bit more real yesterday. So I'm here to report this, this project has even more legs than it had before, so we're very excited and we're, of course, very grateful to be able to work with the county on this and other projects where, as you know, we have the opportunities up in North Lake and we're working with Jim Wallace on security solar concepts within the county, so we've, we've got more plans to keep big and small solar rolling along.
So are you able to, Dave, once we get this agreement together, round break, team rough, can I start on the airport?
We have to mobilize between September and the end of March to stay in the good with migratory bird act. We have to clear the site sometime in that time, so very soon.
We possibly see work this fall?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, the first one, talking about the removal of access roads and replanning the trees, fencing and wire that has been buried. In your lease agreement, draft lease agreement, it talks about in there that, excuse me, that the roads and the wire and everything will stay there. I believe that it needs to be written in there that at the time that the lease is done, that audit of board commissioners here, at the time, they negotiate what is left. The roads may be of value, they may not, what's left in the ground, they may want to leave there or may not, that I believe it should be open for negotiation at the end of the lease. It's hard for us to say today, we're talking anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five years down the road and what Lake County's going to look at and what the commissioners at the time or the airport manager at the time, Tom's only twenty-six, so he might still be there. So that's where I was going.
Lori's searching for another pair of glasses.
I'm not twenty-six.
So that's, in thirty-five years, there may be trees, there may be other things, I don't know what will be there, but I think at the exit, there should be an opportunity for the board commissioners to negotiate that.
Okay, do you think that, I mean, we're on the hook to remove everything, I'm sure whoever the party is would probably welcome the option to not do more work. Do you think something specifically needs to be written into the lease?
Well, on your lease, it says, it says, repair does not include replanning trees or removing access roads, fencing or wire buried to a depth of three feet or more.
Oh, I see.
So you're saying you're not going to do that.
Right.
I'm saying that needs to be negotiated whether commissioners at the time want to leave the roads and all that stuff there.
Okay, so we'll put that as a point to ask whether, and the question is whether, whether we can leave that as a negotiated item within the lease.
Yeah, or we can just say that the whole site will be reclaimed to its natural state except for what's negotiated through the board commissioners at the time. That's, I think that's pretty close to what most things are done. It has to be reclaimed at the end. If you're more comfortable with that, Lori?
We'll talk to David about what language to propose on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm making a note of it and we'll, we'll return with a, with a suggestion on that.
I'm sure there's going to be, whether it's fences or it's roads and valuable things there, that will probably be wanting to be kept. That's what I'm anticipating, but the people setting and leadership at that time should be able to have negotiated.
Right, okay. More chicken?
And I'm using this as a work session even though it's our normal board meeting.
Right, yeah, I got the download from Melanie helping out with how this was going to go today, so.
Okay.
I understand.
So any other questions from anybody on the first one? Okay, number. Okay, number two, let's see, what was it? Okay, that's on the, the airport will need 48 hours to put in the NOTAM if needed. Tom, have you, Tom and David, have you read their response to that? Are you good with that?
Let me just read them here, make sure.
And before I, before they respond, I just wanted to point out that in 6A, we do say all our uses have to be in compliance with FAA laws and regulations. So I think it would be covered under that.
Yeah, that's the big thing. Whether it's new construction or down the road, for some reason you have to do construction. The FAA just wants to, we, we need to know, so we need to put a NOTAM in saying, okay, no aircraft, we go within this area. And you have to, we have to put a closure and so.
Okay.
That's really the big, the big thing, is just the airspace around.
And that's required by FAA.
Yeah, that's required by them.
Therefore, it probably should be covered by the language in 6A.
Did you look at 6A there? It's stated right in there.
I have 6A.
We don't have 6A.
Yeah, so, under permitted uses, and then that was an additional sentence that we had put in on the first round.
Yeah, so that's fine. Basically.
So you're good with that one, Tom?
Yep.
Dave? All right. Number three is about the five-year extensions. We did do an addendum or amendment to the proposed option agreement.
Back in 2016?
Yeah. Which we did sign that, but also in that option agreement, under the first page, if I read this right, under D, option R and option E, agreed to work in good faith to execute it. Well, that's tax abatement. Now, that's something I got to get clarified. Sorry about that. But the second page, on page two, number three, option E and option R agreed to work in good faith to negotiate and agree to the terms of the lease consistent with the agreement, the lease. So I take that as it opens up at this time when we're trying to finalize it. If we decided that we wanted to have in there that it would be two, five-year renewables that, what I was looking at, at agreement with the board at that time. So, but that may be a problem with your investor developers. They're looking for a minimum of 30 years, is that?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Yeah. Yeah, and we learned that early on, which is why we came back to you in 2016 to get the second extension in place. But, you know, when, when, when solar was first, utility scale, solar was first happening, 25 years was kind of the common. And it's becoming more common that people are negotiating, are, are working on 35-year projects. So we, we found early on that investors really wanted to be able to at least go up to the 35 years. So that's, that's why we came to you in 2016, to get that additional five years.
And so.
So it is a, the, the project has been negotiated on the basis of it being able to go at least 35 years.
Okay. So I always throw a corpse crew and everything. So if we were to guarantee the 35 years, I would probably want to guarantee that if they decide to pull out before the 35 years, that we're guaranteed a payment for the full 35 years.
That would be hard to do. That was, the investors actually specifically brought that up. You know, like everyone, we can't foresee everything that's going to happen. And to keep someone on the hook, if for some reason something happens and solar is no longer viable, you know, they're on the hook to remove the facility and things like that, but to keep them on the hook, if for some reason this solar project becomes unviable, would be a very difficult ask. Probably a no-go ask.
So relative to that is the addendum that we signed in July 6th, I think, 2016, that to me kind of takes care of this.
Yeah, you, in that addendum, the county agreed to the, to adding the additional five years.
The two.
Yeah, so that brings, brought us from one potential five-year extension to two potential five-year extensions.
Yeah. But it, it also says that we can negotiate. It's the reason why I'm having that discussion. If you want to just take it as it's cut and dry, what it is, it's what it is. It's where you're concerned, because it's already agreed to.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I only say that, Commissioner, because it gives the terms of the 1,280 each year for the life of the lease. The increase over the original 64,000. And then every year thereafter increases.
Yeah, including the extensions, the.
Right. That's our agenda.
The adder, the adder applies to the extensions as well.
Yep.
Okay, so, good with the automatic two, five-year extensions by the, by the addendum?
Yes. Just, Mr. Bailey, maybe give my way in here. I'm, I'm suggesting that we're not negotiating that, that we've already done it. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think you've already done it. I don't think you're running any risk, because the only way you could possibly turn out to get a disadvantage 25 years from now is if another company came in and said, oh, we can beat what they're offering you by a mile. That's not likely to happen. You already know what you're going to get, so you've negotiated it. And I don't think it's a real concern. The, the option on their part to continue certainly is that if it's a working concern, a lot of work concerned, they're going to continue with it. So I think you're okay.
I'm pretty sure I'm going to be dead and gone by then.
You want to put that in the lease?
That is word for word what David Brown said.
I'm just trying to make sure that whoever's sitting here at that time.
Yeah, he's like, what were they doing?
Has the right tools, because those of us become has-beens pretty fast.
Commissioner Wiers is still alive.
One of the things I tend to say.
So the extensions, the two, five-year extensions is where it's at. So going down to number four, Lisi or Lisa should have the right to terminate in this contract with just cause. So this is getting to where that whoever owns this facility is able to get out by the notice. There's nothing that the county can say that, other than default, that we want you out or anything. I guess that's sort of getting to where, and I understand that, because investor developers got to have that.
The cost can vary.
Yeah, for 35 years. But there's no protection there if, if they decide to get out early for us as far as the financial loss to us for, let's say it's on year 15, that's 20 years of financial loss, if you look at it just straight by the numbers game.
Yeah.
So I was wondering if we could.
Is it a loss right now?
Well, we're, we're negotiating for the future and I'm looking into the future, so I'm talking about the future. So would it be wrong to have that discussion or that thought as if there's a prorated amount or amount if they decide to get out early?
Well, that's not a legally wrong way of doing that. I think if you look at it from the investor's point of view, it's probably similar to the 35-year term. It's a no-go if you're going to put something like that in there. That's my guess. It would be really quite a swallow. I raised it because of the way it was worded, that they could do it at solely their option and there wasn't any language that I could find in the rest of the lease that said in terms of default or anything like that, that we could terminate the lease. But there were some provisions later on that seemed to address that. So that was my real concern, was that it simply say explicitly something about the right of the county to terminate the contract or figure it out by by the contract. And that technically doesn't really need to be in the contract, because you can always bring an action when someone doesn't follow a contract, including not paying for the contract, terminating the contract, that kind of thing. So, but it was just, it was sort of a surprising wording on their part to, to say they could terminate it at will and without the other party being able to terminate it, so.
So let me, let me respond to that, just so it's, it's clear. I think it's reasonably clear, but what we're looking for investors to do is invest in many tens of millions of dollars in this project to build it. And so it's not tenable for that investor to get in a position where the county could, upon notice, terminate. And that puts their investment at very much a risk. So our having the ability to terminate at will has to do with if, for some reason, the investor changes his mind versus what happened yesterday and decides not to build the project, then they don't have something to invest in and they don't have any look for any lease for 25 years or something that they don't have to build it. That's why it has it in for the, for our side to be able to come in with, to protect this special project that doesn't move ahead at all.
Well, maybe if you put language like that in there, that the project is not, never commences operation, then it can be terminated at will.
Because that clears up the whole issue of, well, under what circumstances would they want to be out of the lease? And that, you just explained it.
So to add it, there's two sorts of circumstances. If the project doesn't move ahead or if the project decides to cease before the 25 years of the lease is up, it's kind of the same thing, but in, in either case, the investor will have the ability to terminate the lease. If they decide here's the team, we're going to hold our investment and according to the lease, clean it up as required, remove and so forth, then they want the ability to terminate the lease concurrently with making that as a deal. Does that make sense?
As a business for folks with that doesn't pose any liability to the county, as long as they're returning the property to its original state. You have your 15 years and if they decide they can't continue because it's not financially viable, then everything returns the same way, so you're not out of anything, so.
And you have all the ways to get out of the lease if Airport Solar became a bad actor.
Right. Those are, they're.
Those are all, those protections are in place if Airport Solar quits paying or doesn't follow it or other things lined up in the lease. You have, you have your ability to.
Well, they could quit paying just because they wanted to terminate the lease. But then they have the obligations of returning the site to a traditional condition.
Yeah. And you have the opportunity to get yourselves out of that relationship.
Well, we have so many things, I should say, so many, but we have things that kind of, you have to be visionary and anticipate way out in the future. And I think that's to the point Commissioner Leonard was talking about on all this, is really difficult. We kind of count on relationships, but you folks won't be who have relationships.
Yeah, very much so, yeah. These agreements have to be good for that reason.
We need to make sure that we tie our, our responsibilities clearly in here to our citizenry and what we, when we sign on to these types of things. I'm, I'm just, you know, there's no way of knowing. I'm having a hard time believing that after they invest millions and millions of dollars and have enough going, very good power plant, that they pull the pin and remove the stuff. I don't know under what circumstances.
Yeah, where do I, we, how we've been thinking about it and, you know, we, we're a little visionary, but not that visionary, but how we've been thinking about it is solar is incrementally changing every year and we're already seeing solar plants around the country getting repowered. And so the assumption is if anything changes, it would be that solar's getting a little bit better and you have all that steel in the ground, you may as well just repower it or revise it so that it can have storage associated with it. You know, I, we expect that somebody probably wouldn't walk away from that infrastructure. It's not likely, but we don't, we don't know.
Well, and not being in that field, I can't help but think what you're saying there, Lori, might come to pass, but we have no way of knowing, but that same 300 and some acre footprint that produces 45 megawatts in year 15 or 20 might be able to produce 100 megawatts.
100 megawatts of firm power with storage, who knows?
Exactly, you know, and, and that's, you know, when a new discussion would have to happen on that, but not the discussion, you know, what we do now, the walking away.
The more likely scenario is that in 15 years, the owner would be coming to the county asking for a further extension of the lease.
And when they built the dams on the Clamath River, they never intended on taking them out and today they are. So we don't know what's going to happen in 35 years.
That's right.
So with the discussion, and I don't think we captured in here, but it has to be in here, there has to be financial assurance for the cleanup of this site. That's something that's always been talked about at every meeting I've ever been at, has to either be a bond or what we've been going with is financial assurance. That needs to be in this contract someplace, that there will always be financial assurance for the place to be, they will be cleaned up. Our citizens, our, our people, that's the one thing, they are on us as commissioners all the time. And so, and we've had those discussions at almost every solar meeting. And so what we're talking about, if it's terminated or whatever, let's say in 10 years it's not financially feasible and the investor developer pulls out, we have to be sure that they have financial assurance to be able to clean that up, because if it's a $40 million cost to put in, it's probably going to be a pretty good cost to take it out also. So being as we're in that discussion about termination and everything, I think I've got to make sure that's in there someplace.
So I know this has come up several times before and we've walked back from that for various reasons. What's different in this case?
Five-year agreement. And our discussion right now is, is you don't know what it's going to do. You're projecting that it'll probably add on and grow bigger, but we don't know that that's the case. And so with 320 acres of stuff in the ground, if somebody decided, I'm done, terminate the lease, and they say, I'm filing bankruptcy, I don't have enough money to clean that up. Here you go, county, you've got it.
We need to answer, in the event of a walkaway by the investor, especially in the event of bankruptcy, how would we clean up?
There just has to be financial assurance, however they want to do it, that it will be cleaned up. And I think financial assurance is, because bonding is hard to get, if I remember right, over all the years we've talked about these. And I don't know on the private landowners what they've agreed to, but there should be private landowner agreements that's in place.
Do you have a, since this does come up frequently, do you have a standard, like we said, that you'd propose?
This is the first solar site that we've leased out as a county. We don't get the privilege to know on top of private landowners confidential information.
Well, we get that, we get that asked all the time historically. We've been asked that, what, what's going to keep them from just leaving?
I'd like to leave this open and come, come back with the rest.
Okay, yeah. All right. So it sounds like we've got what we needed on the termination. The next one is noxious weeds. In your draft, it says.
Yeah, I made a mistake in my response.
But, yeah.
It's actually in here.
What worries me on the, on the erosion of noxious weed under P, it says, if Lisi tells to do so, then Lisa may upon 10 days prior written notice to Lisi assume responsibility for the implementation of weed control measures. We have ordinance, we have everything, we don't want to have to go out and get people to go spray it. That's your own responsibility. And if I'm reading that wrong, then I'm reading wrong, but it sounds like that sort of puts a burden upon us after giving you 10-day notice to implement all weed control measures.
Well, it gives you the option. If they're not doing anything, then you can take it over and build it up for the cost of.
Yeah, I think it's your cure, basically, if.
If they're going slow, you give them 10 days and you don't like it, they're not doing anything and they say, well, we're never going to do it, then you can step in and do it. and do it at their cost.
And I know what Commissioner Leonard was just talking about, and we're among friends here, so don't take this wrong, we don't know who the investors are going to be, but I think what we'd rather have is some mechanism to start a process after 10 days of cleaning, than instead of us taking it over and at cost.
Can we find under your ordinance currently? Like, is that, is this otherwise covered?
Under our ordinance, we're able to, after notice, we're able to go in there and take care of the problem and clean. We have not went that far in this time, we're getting close on, that's a whole other discussion. But, I don't think you would want somebody going into a solar site with a weed eater and start weed eating and cleaning up, plus the liability of somebody getting electrocuted or whatever. So, it doesn't make sense for the county to go in there and clean it up at all.
There needs to be an incentive, if that were to happen, that the owners of this, the incentive would be great enough, they'd take care of it. Instead of us take care of it at cost, and you have to go back through building or cleaning or...
Well, and if you go back to your statement, people have to be trained before they can even go into that site, they have to have permission and all this, so that alone tells me, why would we ever assume that responsibility?
Well, you do run into a problem, where if you did assume the responsibility for removal of the weeds, then you run contrary to their concerns about maintaining the operation. And obviously, you'd rather do it from the beginning, but the point is well taken, that the operator could very easily say, why should we do it, let's just let the county do it.
And that's the point, Mr. Bailey.
That would have been a problem for both sides.
They would end up paying the same amount for abating those weeds as if they did it upfront themselves, and so, if they didn't have somebody handy, they'd just say, just that very thing, yeah, county, go ahead and do it, tell us.
And the problem with them doing that is, in the county trying to carry it out, that that action could be interfering with the operation, which is often what the operator wouldn't want, and could say, wait, you have to stop doing it, because it violates the more essential term guarantees, so.
So, if I'm hearing the whole discussion correctly, definitely need to do something to further incent the owner of the project to make sure they deal with noxious weeds. It's not very acceptable to have the county on, have that responsibility kicked to the county, because it gets, it becomes conflicting with the county's basically liability beyond our, on the premises of solar.
Right, it's going to make it contrary to that. I mean, here's the, here's the problem, they don't want to kick the responsibility to you, but the point is correct, that they could easily do that simply by not taking any action. I don't think they want to ever do that, but the problem is, that I think you're going to have to address this, okay, well, what if we don't remove the weeds? And the county has the option of coming in and doing it, and the county says, well, we don't want to come in and do it because of, we're going to repress the lease. Okay, then the operator shrugs and says, well, we gave you a chance, and so, you know. You know, if it's part of a default that isn't cured within 30 days or something like that, or whatever time period you want to put in there if you're comfortable, then I think it gets handled.
So, making, I'm making addressing of weeds as part of one of the default measures? Is that what happens?
You know, one of those things that if it's brought to your attention, you're not ready within 30 days, or addressed within 30 days, something like that.
Well, that's a good point, the default language is already general, and so, does that, does that then take care of it? Do the incentive that you're looking for, is that incentive goal met by the fact that not taking care of weeds puts the order in default of the lease, and then where the county has the great big hammer of being able to terminate?
Right, right. Because originally, the whole 10-day thing isn't designed, the intent is not to shift the burden to the county, the intent is to allow the county the option of saying, we haven't done this, we're going to take care of this real problem, but looked at from the other side, it could be this.
Could create this problem.
Yeah.
Well, and it even states, and Lisi shall reimburse Liso as additional rent for all reason, reasonable weed control measures that deranged, published by the government agency with responsibility for weed control in Lake County. So, it's sort of putting that burden upon us, where I'm not real comfortable with it.
I think I get it, I guess the only further point I would bring up is, we don't want to be special as solar, we want whatever enforcement you apply to other types of uses.
But, you can reference that the solar site will stay in compliance with Lake County ordinance number, whatever ordinance number is, and it's, all the language is in there.
Yeah.
So, that tells you, the weeds, noxious weeds, that you're responsible to take care of all those. So, you could reference our own ordinance, which is local law.
Yeah, I guess I just, I was more pointing out the fact that enforcement should be similar, but I see your point in this case, like, our, our, the way, the mechanism we've given you to enforce isn't, is conflicting, so we have some other mechanism of enforcement needs to be met, either by including, including, making sure it's either included in the general language of default, or specifically included, mentioned in the language of default.
I'm not sure I fully understood everything you were saying.
Yeah, that's all right.
That would, I'll speak, I'll interpret, and just say, yes, what she said would solve the problem.
So, I think, similar to other items above, I think we understand the problem, we suggest a solution that will be, will sent to Jim and yourselves.
You okay?
You're taking good notes.
Well, I just, does it, is there already explicit language? Is the idea of making a specific reference to county ordinance, applicable county ordinances? I don't know, without doing a little bit of reading here, but if the lease already has a general provision in it about the less equal compliance of county ordinances, then I don't see the reason to specifically call out the weed ordinance, because it's already generally covered in the compliance ordinance.
Your draft is the one that called out the part about the weeds, we didn't. So, it's what, like you, you can eliminate that one if you want, and just say, as far as I'm concerned, we'll follow Lake County weed ordinance.
Yeah, so I guess we're kind of asking the exact question, I think, Commissioner.
But again, the whole point of being in here was to put the burden on them to act, and if they didn't, then the county had the option of coming in and taking care of the problem. That's the real purpose of that provision. And you're right, if they wanted to, they could just say we're not going to do it, but they can already do that, whether this provision's in there or not. It's just telling you that if they sit on it for 10 days, then the county has the option of saying, okay, if you haven't done, we're going to do it. That should motivate them to take care of it, because they don't want you coming in and disrupting our operation. That's the original point of this.
Well, and I guess you're good for, even if we did reference to ordinance, to ordinances, we will go in after so many days, and I'm not real comfortable with people going in a solar site that's fenced and locked.
They don't like it either.
So, whatever will work the best to protect both ways, it's what that needs to be, has to be, weeds have to be taken care of, but our ordinance, I have to re-correct what I said, it may not truly apply exactly because of amateur notice and everything, and we can't go in and debate.
Yeah. Sufficient impetus for the developer, for the owner of the project to act on noxious weeds without really incurring a charge of disservice.
So, while we're speaking here, I got to the point where 5B of the lease obligates the lessy to use, operate, maintain the premises and facility in accordance with all applicable laws. And the applicable laws, as defined earlier in the contract, it specifically calls out ordinances, as defined in the law. So, it is, the contract is explicit that the, that the operation will be in accordance with all ordinances, so that would, just in generality, bring in a legal ordinance.
You're actually right, what if we put in the current language addressing weeds, simply a statement, this provision is not intended to allow the operator to shift responsibility to the county. I think you do that. And that addresses it, because...
That's what we pay you for, Mr. Bailey.
This provision is not intended...
To allow the operator to shift responsibility for weed removal to the county.
I love a common sense solution. And a simple one at that.
Okay, so, then we go to the number six, which is 8D. This is about Surprise Valley, and I believe this might be, just because I've read it wrong, or the, let me see what it is, it's the attachment or exhibit, exhibit, what exhibit is it? Exhibit C, I believe. Well, my concern on that was, was to make sure that if Surprise Valley had any easements across any of this property, that we weren't going against any easements that they have, and I'm, I have not been able to sit down with our planner, with Darlin', apologize for that, I did have time, I just didn't do it, to see if there's any easements across this property. And I didn't know that if we could restrict that by going into a lease agreement whenever they're on the deed. So, my expertise was not to read township and range, and where that easement is, which is the deed. So, do you know, do you want, do you know if they have an actual easement across those 320 acres?
Yeah, I think the easements are written very generally, and unfortunately, I didn't read copies of those. But the intent of the language was just to limit just the array area, and not limit any other Surprise Valley activity on any of the rest of the airport property, other than the limitation there.
I understand that where you would want, but I didn't know our legality, where it's on the deed, and that there's an easement there, if we could limit what's already been agreed upon and is on the deed.
Yeah, we have already reviewed that, and I...
I think he was afraid you were going to say something. We can't, we can't change their easement rights. If somebody wanted to enforce it, then that's the risk that the operator's going to run, that someone could come in and say, I've got an easement that allows you to do X or Y. The likelihood of that, I think, is infinitesimally low, but I think that's a risk that the operator runs, that someone says, I've got an easement here, now I'll address that. Do you see it in a different way?
No, I don't see it a different way. I, I can speak with pretty good confidence that we reviewed their easements, and it's not conflicting, but it's been quite a long time since I've looked at those, so, to Brad's point, I will review the Surprise Valley easements and make sure the existing language is not conflicting with the current premises.
To address your point, what we do with this can't affect the existing easements, they're going to take, the lease is going to be subject to existing easements. If they haven't done their homework, and someone has an easement that says we can come right through the middle, then that's too bad.
That's between the owner and the developer.
But, yeah, I would be stunned if they hadn't figured that out at the very beginning.
Yeah, well, things do fall to the cracks, we're usually not on that, so. Make a note to review that, review the legal descriptions.
Okay, and, yes, and I'll call up the Darlin', make sure we cross over on that. Just whenever you read deed there, D on AD, it says, shall not accrue the hour otherwise permits Surprise Valley to install or locate or cause existing or on the premises any electrical equipment, on and on. So, that just made me wonder about our legality of agreeing to that, if there's something in there that says they can. So, that one needs to be looked at.
Yeah.
Yeah, we put it this way, that's not our problem, that's their problem.
Yeah, that is, that would be a liability to us.
Okay, and so, the next one, it's still, it's not written down here, but I did have it lined in mine. Under E, halfway through it, call to permit any activity or conditions on the premises or any adjacent property owned or controlled by Liso, that may, in Liso's sole judgment, adversely impact Liso's ability to utilize the premises. I didn't like that, and your sole judgment, Liso's sole judgment, of our activities outside the fence, that you get to say that you impacted our operations. So, I just didn't want, I wanted to, I understand if we impact your operations, but I don't think you should be the sole judge of that. We ought to either have a third party or somebody that comes in, because if we have a $30 million investment, they come in and says, well, you cut us by 10% on your, on our production at their sole judgment, that'd be a pretty good bill. So, if...
Yeah, the language says something about the lesser shot and agent activity that will adversely affect, and you're okay, but it's, it's all the government, that's the intention wrong. Because you really could challenge that, I mean, we could challenge this, you know, invalid provision, but you don't want to do that.
I think we're just making a note of this one to take up, right?
Unless there's a specific change of language that you'd like to suggest at this point? I'll throw it ahead.
I'd be a bad lawyer. You know why you call it a bad lawyer, don't you?
Your honor.
I'd use that.
That's a good one.
I use that during our winter daily.
I was going to say, you're late for a week.
Okay, so that was both legal comments, when you guys look at that one, for better review. The next one is taxes. So, in the option agreement, it refers to the red zone, and it refers to $5,000 per megawatt, and so, it's completely different, and I believe we have a pilot already signed. So, which is different than our option agreement, which should mean that there's, should be an amendment or amendment to, I don't know if there is or not, to that option agreement, but the option agreement's going to go away with this. So, what, should we have a reference in there that we're, we will follow the pilot agreement that is currently in place?
We agree that makes sense to add that to the lease.
Okay. So, then we go down to where we at now?
They're here, so they're here.
Check number eight off.
I couldn't read quite fast, it's not that long. Okay, and you wanted to discuss, because of our FBOs, who need access in case of emergencies and those type of things, and I would assume you, probably that would be contingent upon the right kind of training and everything, but we need to make sure that, you know, not a lot of people go on the accidents out there, but say, there's nobody around, there's a fire at the site, worried about it getting onto our site or whatever, I don't know what could happen.
Yeah. As David Brown said, in the event of an emergency, emergency responders can do what they do. But, for example, if Tom is at the site every day with his son, and we think, you know, they may observe situations where they might want to enter the fence, yes, they should, we should work, the owners of the project should work to give them a treatment about, you know, how solar works, what's dangerous and what's not, and how do you, where it disconnects and all that kind of stuff.
Commissioner, since this is on county property, excuse me, sorry, the Red Rock Company is going to have specific protocol and training for emergency responders in the event of a fire or something else. And I can see out here, potentially, because we've just been talking about noxious weeds, where the vegetation is allowed to grow, and we were to get a fire out there on 320 acres, and it's burning these solar panels. I don't think our emergency responders right now know how to deal with that. And so, I think because it is of a different nature than what they typically respond to, it says...
it says in there, and we talked about having to plant something that we could educate our responders in knowing how to handle this.
Yeah, and I can see that, I mean, there's a lot more solid than there was several years ago, so overall, there should be a North Lake and a South Lake solar training for emergency responders.
Exactly, and that kind of gets, that kind of gets to it, you know. Well, people think when they pull the switch, it shuts it off, it shuts it from going down the line, but it's still producing, so...
Correct, to that point. You're trained, you're, you're a little bit trained.
Yeah, well, I mean, you really don't want to stick a fire hose out there where it's producing power, so...
Yep.
We will, but for our side of it, whatever Tom and FAA requires, we need to make sure that we're in compliance, because I think there's something, Tom, that you have to be able to have access to any ground that you manage.
Yeah, any grounds. Mainly that, that pertains to a closed hangar, you know, because the FAA wants to know whether somebody makes drugs in a hangar, or, you know, storing things that shouldn't be there.
Right.
So that's the kind of thing, but, but we still have to specify there is access. And I would always, you know, any, any manager would have to call you in advance and say, "Hey, you know, this is why we need to be there." Or say, "An aircraft goes through the fence." Now the NTSB, the FAA, all these, they want to know that there's permission and access at, at that point.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's kind of where that's leading from our side, is making sure that if the FAA requests access, that they get access.
Yeah.
So...
Whatever procedures were put in place then to the FAA authority.
And if you go back to what Peter had mentioned earlier, earlier in the proposed lease agreement, it references all FAA rules and laws and everything, so...
Yeah.
So it's referenced to that part of it. This part here, I, I don't know if we're, if anything else needs to be in there, I just want to make sure that we're in compliance.
Yeah, yeah, because that will affect...
Both parties.
Yeah, if we don't do that, then it could affect even our grant process with the FAA, and that's as important as anything, just specifying for that, that, you know, there is protocol in place to be able to access with permission.
So it sounds like we're talking about, not necessarily an addition to the lease, but an agreement that, I mean, we, the lease does require that we follow FAA rules and whatever, we, we've noted that we, there needs to be a training for emergency personnel, and that any operations bends to the rules, incorporates the rules of the FAA.
Yeah, and you know, whenever you get that training together, I would think our facility, maybe maintenance guys and Tom are part of that training also. We just, we just have to know who's going to, in a small rural area, who's going to be the first one there.
Who's going to get the call, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, well, we could take a 15-minute break and come back to other 12 items I have.
No, I don't have 12 more items.
I see there were one other tiny little technical fix that...
Oh, yeah, I saw that, there's a problem.
There's a problem there, okay, great.
Commissioner, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Very good. You guys have anything, Tom, Dave, anybody else?
Nothing else on the lease, we do have another item.
I'll have to look in my agenda.
Is that Surprise, sorry.
No, that's fine, all right. Where's the check?
The sooner we get this nailed down, the sooner that check is probably okay.
Yeah. Okay, so no other questions on Mr. Bailey, any?
No, no.
So work with Dave, Tom, Mr. Bailey, through them, and as you get the questions answered, we'll go with that. What's other item you have?
We wanted to talk, we've introduced the concept to Tom and Dave a couple of weeks ago, we wanted to talk about an easement across airport property, generally following the fence of the airport solar project, for another project we have in the works, Garrett Solar, which is southwest of the airport. We, we have worked with Darwin, in particular, stated very strong preference that we keep as much as possible underground, for trying to get our, for getting our power out of this area and over to the interconnection, which is off of Stock Drive, close to the solar plants, the existing solar plants. And this is our most direct route to, and the other big item is that we would like to have the two power lines for Airport Solar and Garrett Solar share their route across to, from Airport Road to the point of interconnection with the 115 line, straight by the real road. So, long story short, we would like to request an easement, generally following the fence of Airport Solar, but outside of the fence.
On the south.
It would be along the east edge, and I brought a, I brought a visual, although it's really hard to read this visual, I might...
Is it, is this where I get this air, are you using Surprise Valley's easement?
No, but I guess we've already pointed out the homework, and we need to make sure it doesn't interfere with Surprise Valley's easement. So the red, I've got one for both of you, the red outlines the solar project, I better put the lawyer in the loop here, too. The red outlines the solar project area for airport, and Garrett Solar is down here to the southwest, and we would like to run this yellow line along the outside of the fence to bring the Gentai line for Garrett Solar out, so it can join the Gentai corridor for Airport Solar. So we have these approvals in place with the county here, we have an approval in place with the Landowner Morgan, and so the last missing piece is this connection, hopefully through the airport property.
So my first general question is, if you do get an easement, does that trigger where you have to do cultural, what might you study?
Well, we, we studied more than the 315 acres, we studied 380 acres. That's another reason why we wanted to stick close to the fence, we've already studied the area. So it's already been studied for species, environmental, cultural, and you'll notice it does take just a slight jog away from the fence for a short run, that's actually where we're avoiding a small, not very significant, but it would be costly to mitigate it for...
So down on this end, you, the cultural and all the states have been done on that?
Yeah, yeah, we, we studied quite a bit more than, than the actual red outline.
Okay, and Tom, where it comes close to everything, it all fits for your operation?
Yeah, we looked at the safety areas and stuff, and it was outside of the safety areas.
And I would assume we wouldn't allow anything but underground?
Just underground for it.
Yeah, I think you get into, well, we would all get into a lot of complication with FAA and...
Yeah, and when they've already stated that if it's underground, they don't, they don't want anything to do with it.
Yeah, it doesn't change airport layout plans, so they don't really do...
The, the challenge, just off the top of my head, is, is now we put an easement across, that's not a straight line, across other parts of the property that's been semi-developed for racetrack in that, for expansion on that side of it, now we would have an easement that could limit growth on that. And then, it's not, very often you see easements that have so many jogs, usually an easement is as much of a straight line as you can get. I understand the cultural sites or whatever, or wetlands, whatever does that, but that, that could limit us as far as the rest of our properties for any development on, on future, but it generally follow the outside fence line, so that your properties don't be limited on future growth. That's, that's a challenge I see right off the top of my head with the, going right, it almost touches the racetrack there, if they ever wanted to extend that on out for an eighth mile to a quarter mile, it'd go right across the top of an easement.
Well, the, the, we drew the yellow line as we did, so that it, it hugs the fence line of the Airport Solar property.
Yeah.
So we did it specifically to, to avoid placing a burden on additional plant.
Well, it's just a fence line, fence is going to be removed whenever you expand a racetrack or whatever, that's...
And I draw the fence line of the, of the Airport Solar project.
So, the part, so are you saying, well, I might not, I'm saying you have all this leased over here to...
Everything inside the red...
Everything inside the red is part of the lease?
Yeah, see, there's a dotted line along that.
Scale was the problem.
Oh, okay, I couldn't see that.
Yeah, the scale was the problem on what you're going to do.
Okay, so this...
See, it follows right down.
General. Puddle around the same direction.
I didn't see the red line here that's covered by yellow, I seen it right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would clarify that.
So that's all under, under lease for 35 years. Within my worry is, could have been a lot sooner than now.
The expansion of maybe...
Well, it's easier to tell on...
Yeah, that there makes a lot more sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll blame it on Commissioner's account for a little bit of this here.
So we can't...
Well, you have to put a ramp up to go over the top.
It's an interesting racetrack.
I might fall under that provision we were talking about.
Also, Brad, with the FAA, I don't think that they would allow for expansion of that racetrack, or the...
So would they allow for resurfacing?
Yeah, we can do, we can leave what's there, there and maintain it, but if we take it to them and request for, for an expansion, it will probably be rejected.
We'd probably fall under the same requirement for Airport Solar, which is you would have to give an environmental assessment, which...
Well, even, even that, there's actually specific, there's specific rules of having a racetrack that's close to the airport, and...
There, there's things that need to be cleaned up, we don't even need to get into the racetrack discussion.
Exactly, so if we change it, yeah, grandfather work.
It was asked to be cleaned up by the last facilities and land person, it never happened, so we'll get it cleaned up.
Yeah.
So that clarifies it for me. I apologize, I, I like it, this here, so...
Thought the colors would be easy to read, but it turns out they aren't.
Well, now looking at it, it makes perfect sense, as far as I go. So that easement, do we need to acknowledge that in the draft lease, that that easement would go away as a, as a, in the lease?
So this is, this supports Garrett Solar, not Airport Solar, so it actually, and the reason sort of needs to be outside of the fence of Airport Solar, because separate investors, separate property, but we didn't want to impact more airport property than we need to, so...
So why didn't you just come down the county right-of-way on the road, and do straight here, and straight up, and straight down, and then interconnect there, and all these jogs have to cost extra money?
Yeah, yeah.
We did that specifically to try to have as little impact to the county as possible. We, the idea of placing poles along Airport Road to the east and then the north...
You also have bitches on, on big parts of that room.
Yeah, well, there's, there's power down through there already, I, it's a question, so...
No, our, our, our goal was to, to make this as low an impact as possible, and it does, it does cost us money, but that was our goal, to make it as low an impact as possible.
Well, wait till you know the cost of easement.
Thanks for acknowledging cost more.
So, process for getting easement.
Well, they just notified you that they, they need this, so they'll come back with an easement proposal, and they can't decide that like any contract.
Okay. Just talking about going down the county road, I don't know, but Surprise Valley out there, Pacific Power on that part, it seems like if there's existing poles, then maybe they would let you tie right on to, or head on the poles and go, go right down there, maybe, or maybe not, I don't know.
That honestly, I mean, trying to figure out, not knowing we were going to talk about this, it just, boy, that makes a lot of sense just on the surface.
Yeah, it, it's harder from a shared facilities agreements perspective for investors and utilities. It's not impossible, but it's harder.
I can tell you this, that on our right-of-ways and everything, and there's law on our county right-of-ways, it's relatively simple to go on our right-of-ways.
Yes, it's, it is simple to, you mean to get an approval to go on the right-of-way?
Yeah, yeah, and I believe, unless I'm mistaken, I don't, even though it's private, we're not allowed to charge department rate, other than it has to be brought to a standard, because we was dealing with that with another solar company.
With another solar developer?
Yep. Not positive on all the rules and everything, but we have done some research on that, so just, just a thought.
Okay.
So we'll look at possible proposal for an easement.
Okay, great, thank you for considering that, and thank you for treating your regular session as a work session, so we can bring that up.
All right, anything else?
I think Airport Solar is...
All right, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, pressures.
Thank you.
And so...
See you.
Thank you very much.
You take care.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I didn't remember your name, that's fine. See, we have the four best features.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
So we're going to take a four-minute break, four, five-minute break, whatever.